It is.
Good morning, everyone. I now call to order the February 2nd, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. Good morning. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board, Tony Marneek; County Council, Stephen Madcor. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. If anybody wishes to testify, we have some blue cards. You can fill them out and put them in the basket, and Tony will collect them. It's just for me to keep track of who wants to come up when. And we also have online participation as well. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, first item is a public hearing for the Service District Number Five Street Lighting. If Chair, you would please convene as that board.
I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Service District Number Five Board of Directors.
You have one public hearing, but nine items. These are all assessment area changes for the lighting district. There are no county general funds involved. These are all paid by ratepayers. These are mostly new developments in Clackamas County that want street lighting, and we do that for them. Wow, so there's nine of them, so I'm quickly going to say them, and then staff will go into more detail. So, item one, Assessment Area 4817, commercial building, 85 linear feet, frontage $99 a year. Item two, Assessment 4418 Les Schwab Tire Service Center, 2234 linear feet, frontage $272 a year. Item three, Assessment Area 1119, food carts, 341 linear feet, frontage $396 a year. Item four, Assessment Area 2319, three-lot partition, $681 a year. Item five, Assessment Area 4619, two-lot partition, $94 a year. Item six, Assessment Area 1220, three-lot partition, $94 a year. Item seven, Assessment Area 721, three-lot partition, $141 a year. Item eight, Assessment Area 1121, Quail Park, 15-lot subdivision, $705 a year. Item nine, Assessment Area 520, Amy Gardens, eight-lot subdivision, $520 a year. Again, all of these will be paid by ratepayers. No county general funds are involved. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, and Wendy Correll, Service District Specialist, are here to go into more details. And today is Dan Johnson's birthday. Happy birthday, Dan. Thank you. Go ahead.
Gee, thank you. Chair Smith.
Should we sing for you?
What's that?
Should we do a little song?
No, please, no.
I've got singing lines.
No, 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 no. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Dan Johnson, Director of DT. Happy birthday to you. Oh, yeah, thank you. Nice job. Yeah. I gotta tell you, this is really fun. Barb Cartman, the prior director, just texted me, "Happy birthday," and she said, "Well, is the board going to acknowledge you today?" And I said, "Oh, I hope not." Thanks for making all my nightmares come true. I appreciate it. Chair Smith, Commissioners, Dan Johnson, Director of Department of Transportation and Development, joined here with Wendy Correll, our street lighting specialist for the county. Just, there are a rush of these, and we apologize for that. You've heard this a couple weeks in a row. I want to make sure the board understands we are working with county council to see if there's a way to make these more streamlined and easier to kind of be processed through the Board's approval, but we're working on that. The areas before you today, as I love the fact that the administrator asked if he would like us to read them or him, and he volunteered to read them. He did an excellent job. Areas before you today, they're set out the general rate schedule that's been adopted by the Board. And with that, I will hand it over to Wendy for more information.
Yeah. Good morning. Wendy Correll, Clackamas County, Service District Number Five. This is a district responsible for street lighting in both the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County and also in the city of Happy Valley. Street lighting is installed through conditions of approval, and we do that through our land use zoning department. And those are done for all residential, commercial, industrial, multifamily developments in the urban areas of Clackamas County and the city of Happy Valley. As Gary indicated, there are nine areas before you. Seven of those are in the Clackamas County area, and two are in the city of Happy Valley. Prior to scheduling this hearing, the Street Lighting District notified the property owners for each area in writing of the public hearing to discuss a petition and review the next steps in the process, and there were no remonstrances received. That concludes the presentation. Any questions that you may have, I'm happy to answer.
Does the Board have any questions? Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
The light is not working.
It is.
It's online.
I've got a light bulb down.
You must be short-circuited this morning.
Yeah. I want to thank Wendy and Dan. I think the Service District Number Five Street Lighting is the only government agency that I can remember in near past memory that had a rate reduction. And thank you for keeping our streets safe and secure and for keeping those costs down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? I will now open the public hearing for the Street Lighting District only. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to testify regarding the items that were, the nine street lighting items that were read into the record? I see none. Tony, is there anybody online who wishes to testify?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone registered. If you would like to speak on this topic, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will now close the public hearing and ask, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Scholl, did you want to say something?
No, no, I'm good.
I will entertain a motion.
Director, I move, I mean...
That's okay.
Is that right, Chair? Director?
Whatever.
I move, I move, we approve the Board's orders forming Assessment Areas 48-17, 44-18, 11-19, 23-19, 46-19, 12-20, 07-21, 11-21, and 05-20 with, in Clackamas County Service Area District Number Five.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved the Assessment Areas for the lighting district of all of the items he just mentioned, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, staff. I will now adjourn as Service District Number Five Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Next is a public hearing, and it is a public comment on the draft Home ARP Plan for grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grant value is $3,649,508. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Rod Cook is the Director of Health Housing and Human Services. Mark Saroy is the Community Development Manager of Health Housing and Human Services. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Commissioners, thank you for having us before today for this hearing. I'm going to turn this over to Mike, Mark Saroy. He's our resident expert on housing, and we'll introduce what this is all about so we can get to the hearing part.
Chair Smith and Commissioners, HUD notified us about this funding in September of 2021. It was before you then. And part of the process to get this special funding with the Home ARP Plan is that we have a public engagement process. So, we advertised our draft plan a week ago, and our comment period ends February 10th. We advertise in newspapers of record. We had the PGA staff distribute a notice on Twitter and Facebook, and we distributed the meeting notice to all our homeless providers as well. To this point, I've not gotten any public comments, so that's what we're asking to have, receive any additional comments, and there may be people online.
Excuse me, Mark. I didn't hear. How long did you advertise for public comment on this?
HUD requires a minimum 15-day period. We have a 17-day period. It started January 23rd. It will end February 10th.
Okay, all righty. Any further comments on this? I will now open a public hearing for testimony, and I will take any in-person testimony first regarding the draft Home ARP Plan for grant funding for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Is there anybody in the room who would like to testify on this? I do not see anyone. Tony, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
At this time, I do not have anyone registered. If there is anyone who would like to testify on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
I do see somebody in the room has raised her hand. Madam, would you come forward? Introduce yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
I assume...
Madam, you need to sit here at the, come up, come up here where the microphones are. That's how we do public testimony. And please introduce yourself and your area of residence.
Okay, my name is Karen Cook.
Can you like pull this closer? I can't hear. Thank you very much.
My name is Karen Cook, and I live in Oregon City and have lived in Happy Valley much of my life. At any rate, is this concerning the hotel that is going to be being...
No, madam. This is for the HUD Urban, the Home ARP Plan. What you want to talk about will come at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so I will...
And I have your card.
Okay, I wasn't clear on what they were representing.
This is a totally different topic.
Okay, good.
So, if you would like to come up later, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, we see none. I will now close the public hearing and ask the Board, is there any further discussion?
Chair, just for the public watching, and the question of the last person that just was before us, it might be a good idea for staff to give us just a quick review of what this is all about, because the quality in is in the packet on this item. It's not for, but it relates to, as I read it. So, I think it'd be a good idea just to make sure that everyone knows what we're doing here.
So, we'll submit this plan. We'll bring it back to you as a final plan. We'll submit it to HUD. HUD will then either approve or ask us to change the plan, and then a grant will come back and, for your signature. So, then we'll have access to this money. We're planning to use these funds for affordable housing projects with your approval.
So, what is the home pro, what, in more detail, what is the home program itself? What does it fund?
Very good. The home program is federal funding that we get from, the county gets an allocation every year to build affordable housing projects, and we can do services with it as well. This particular grant was a special one-time grant that was available to us for COVID-related homeless funding. We have the option to do many things. Well, we could do outreach. We could do services. We could do shelter services. We could do affordable housing to serve homeless people. So, the plan currently is that we will use these funds to supplement our affordable housing projects to build more units.
Okay. Commissioner Schrader, you have a question?
No, I just want to make a comment. Thank you for doing this. And every year at our legislative conference with the National Association of Counties, the Community Economic Development and Workforce Committee always puts forward a resolution for full funding of all of HUD's opportunities that they offer us. And it's one of those resolutions that's pretty consistent. We do it every year. We've been very successful encouraging our federal colleagues to make sure that these funds remain strong and available to us. Thank you.
Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, Mark, this Home ARP Plan, is it available on the county website for people to read?
Yes, there's a link in the meeting notice to the community development website, and that's where they could reach it.
Somebody could go to H3S and find it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Probably the easiest is go to the Board of County Commissioners under the tab Business Meetings, scroll down, and click on the link. It's probably the fastest and easiest way to get the information if you are interested. Commissioner West?
Thank you, and good morning. I am, just for clarity's sake, affordable housing is the purpose for the one-time grant, am I correct? Is the staff planning on bringing us, bringing this back to us once it's approved and using it for the quality in specifically? Is that the affordable housing that is in the plan, or is this already kind of earmarked yet at all for any other projects, or just in general affordable housing?
The plan is currently in general affordable housing. With all our home-funded projects, putting together a package of funding to build affordable housing is difficult and has all this other money in it as well. And our home funds typically come at the kind of the very end. We consider it gap funding. And those home loans would come before you for approval. And the home program has lots of caveats about they can't spend so much per unit, and we have to monitor the programs or the affordable housing projects. Once they're built for 20 years to make sure they stay affordable, their, their income qualifying people, their safe, decent, and sanitary housing, that sort of thing. So, currently we have about 30 projects we've funded in the past that we're still monitoring annually to make sure they're certifying that they do everything according to the home funding rules. So, to answer your question, these funds have not been allocated to any project yet. In the near future, I'll be working with our, our new division, our revised division to request proposals for what to do with these funds, and wherever, whatever project gets selected will come before you in the form of a home loan document for you to review and approve.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
Thank you for all that. I think it helps, helps the public know what they're watching, what we're, what we're doing here. I would love in the future to see how you anticipate programming those dollars and where they might go, you know, not in immediate need because you haven't made up, you haven't figured it out yet, but as it goes, I'd like to get a report at least on this. These are one-time funds, right?
Correct.
Right, so...
Yep. Commissioners, according to your script that is mentioned, if I could finish out, I think I'd be very clear what we're doing. I'm now going to close the public hearing on this, so we're legal. And Gary, what are the next steps on this?
Yes, thank you. So, the next steps are, our staff is going to take all of the public comment received, incorporate that into a plan, and bring it back to you. So, you're going to see this again before final approval and authorization. So, this is simply the public input portion. It will all come back to you before any final decision.
And what we did today by having the public hearing is part of the legal process from the federal government, subject to our opinions and modifications or acceptances or not at a later date, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Gary?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda for Clackamas County, elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, apologies, County Council, item one, approval of a settlement agreement and mutual release with Terry W. Emmert and Emmert Development Company for resolution to Clackamas County Circuit Court Case 17CV23937. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services, item one, approval of a public improvement contract with Endress Northwest Incorporated for the Estacada Head Start Improvements Project. Agreement value is $547,000 for five months. Funding is through federal community development block grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a behavioral, behavioral health services delegation agreement from Care Oregon Incorporated for behavioral health services. Agreement value is $2,182,200 for six months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of Amendment Six, increasing funding from an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for financing community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery, prevention, and problem gambling services. Amendment value is $5,451,980.13 for six months. Agreement value is increased to $15,098,899.27 for 1.5 years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, item one, approval to apply for a grant through the National Culvert Removal Replacement and Restoration Culvert Aquatic Organism Passage Program for the replacement of two culverts at Conway Creek under Ash Off Road in Roderendron. Grant value is $1,490,320 with matching funds of $372,580 through county road funds. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a board order to adopt an optional solid waste collection service for a fee in the addition of batteries to weekly solid waste collection service. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of Amendment Five to a disposition agreement Beaver Creek Structures, LLC pertaining to property located at 19314 South Beaver Creek Road. Agreement value is $33,912,241. Funding through land sale proceeds and the county road fund. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of Amendment Two to a disposition agreement with the Blue wood Abernathy Creek, LLC pertaining to property located at 902 Abernathy Road. Agreement value is $3,344,251. Funding is through the buyer. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved for the approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a North Clackamas County Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary?
This is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item, approval of a board order recommending to metro regional government that the Concord Community Park be the first NCPRD project to use metro local share bond funding. Projected agreement value is $750,000 to $1.25 million. Funding is through metro. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Move approval?
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for the approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda. Commissioner Savis has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Next is Public Communication. Now you can come forward. Yes. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissionforpubliccommunication@bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. And was that Elizabeth Hale? Is, is she here? I have several cards up here. Elizabeth Hale, thank you. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Elizabeth Hale, Happy Valley. Hello, Tootie. And we're talking about the Turnkey Project, right?
Yes, you can talk about whatever you want.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me here, and this is my first time being here and doing this. So, I just found out about this project two weeks ago. I am so proud, and I'm so excited about the project. I think it's a great idea. I strongly believe that, yes, we need to help those in need. And as Martha was saying yesterday, you know, the Bible does state, "Help those, the poor." The poor in spirit is my discernment on that. I'm concerned about the location. The citizens of Happy Valley just found out two, two weeks ago. The mayor just found out two weeks ago. And honestly, I'm just in shock. And I just trying to discern everything all at once and trying to consume everything or the information that I received yesterday. And I'm just not sure if we still have a say on it. So, that's my concern. Security, safety for the neighborhood, the businesses, as a business owner, from what I've seen, and, you know, the area that I live in. So...
Thank you very much for your concerns. The mayor has known about this much longer than two weeks ago, because he and I have had discussions on this, just for your information. Any Commissioners who wish to comment at this time? Thank you very much. Karen, oh, Martha.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I love Tom Ellis, Mayor Tom. He's a good buddy. And David Imani is one of your folks, too. And I just sent them the other day. If you go to the Oregon Community Foundation website, it will give you all the information of how this came about, what other projects are being done throughout the state. And I also sent them, I am going to be sending them, I also contacted folks from our National Association, and they sent me a list of where these, these models are built, are being done across the United States of America, two in different counties. So, it gives you an overview. And again, I know that this makes people very worried because of, you know, I've said this before, because people who are homeless are in survival mode and their behaviors are difficult. But I'm just trying to make sure that at least read that, and it might put your mind at ease with how these things are structured.
So, what I'm hearing is that we're modeling other cities, and there's been other projects that what you're trying to do have been successful at it?
Yes, they have been.
And we can find those online?
Yeah, and you can find those online. It's happened in Oregon, and it's happened across. We're not, we're not innovating. We're taking other people's innovation and kind of using it here locally. And so, so just go ahead, and I'm also, I'll give Tom a call again, and David, and we'll talk to him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, for your information, there is a 24-page report online at the policy session. Go to yesterday's date, which was February 1st. It's a 24-page report. It's very good. It's not completely finished yet because we're still working on some implementation. But I think there are several people who want to talk about this, and I'll save my comments to the end. Commissioner West, were you one of the...
Yeah, I was just going to pair it. That's what you just said, is that the staff under...
Yeah, I was just gonna parrot, that's what you just said, is that the staff under the direction of this board worked to put together a framework to communicate the vision of what this project looks like, and many, and it's not totally complete, but it is that framework to hopefully, if you have concerns, maybe it addresses those, maybe you still have concerns, and that's okay too. The project is, you know, we're all still engaging in this process, it's not a done decision. We have not voted on approving the Quality End at this point. It will, you know, in the near future, you know, that vote will come on which way this board goes. But let us know, let our staff know, reach out to any of these Commissioners, reach out to me, if you're like, where do I find that, where's that link, help me, we'll totally do our best to communicate that to you.
So, as the President of the Happy Valley Business Alliance, I also speak for all the other businesses, and it'll be good to have more information in giving them the security and the knowledge and understanding of what you're doing. And again, right now, we're just in shock, and it makes me nervous.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Anybody can send an email to the BCC@clackamas.us to request the report. Up next, Karen Cook. Please come forward, introduce yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
So, yes, my name is Karen Cook. Thank you for having me here, although I guess I did invite myself. Yeah, I share concern in this situation. I'm really representing friends, mothers, grandmothers of Clackamas County that are concerned about the management of this facility if it were to go the way it's proposed. It looks to me like history kind of shows that we've put nationwide, we've thrown billions of dollars at the homeless problem, and it appears to be a gravy train. Everybody puts money at it, but it has never resolved the issue. So, how are we to know that in Clackamas County, if this hotel was to be transformed into a housing facility for the drug addicted and the homeless, which of course we care about, but how do we know that that facility is going to be maintained in a way that it's not going to get out of hand? This is a community of families, not that there aren't families in inner-city Portland, but why are we spreading it outward into other areas? Also, I have to note that it is right there on 205 where it's, you know, it's a freeway and it's a transient area whereby they can go places, and I understand that they need to go places. But my biggest concern is that this hotel turn into a really disgusting place, that nobody is overseeing, and even though there may be promises for it to be overseen and for it not to get out of hand, we, the people, don't really know if we can trust that, and how do we trust that when we see in LA County, they have thrown millions and billions of dollars at it, and it's worse than ever? So, my thinking is, send the money back to wherever it comes from. We don't want it in Clackamas County. Thank you.
I'm gonna have Adam Brown come up and sit next to Stephen Magcor because as questions come up, you're gonna be our subject matter expert, so to speak, on this. What I heard from this last person was, she's concerned that this is going to be a homeless shelter where people come in and flop. It is, Madam, please maintain order. This most definitely is not a homeless shelter, and we're prepared to talk about that again. Please download the document that I referred to. This is transitional housing where people come in, are evaluated, and then they move on in several months. Adam, please talk about that and the drug addiction.
Thank you, Chair. Adam Brown, Deputy Director of Clackamas County's Health Housing and Human Services. So, when homeless services are delivered on a continuum, right? So, there's outreach, shelter, housing placement and retention, and supportive housing. That's our continuum. And it's a continuum that's reflective of where we find folks who are facing housing insecurity. So, outreach and engagement, that's for folks when they're on the streets. Supportive housing, sort of the end game, right? That's putting people in permanent housing solutions with supportive services that they need to maintain and sustain their housing security. So, on that continuum, we have different shelter or temporary housing types. So, there's a mini continuum within that temporary solution, right? On one end of that continuum is something like emergency shelter. On the other end of that mini continuum is transitional housing. We're proposing this for use as transitional housing. And the distinction between that and emergency shelter is that emergency shelter is really a sort of life-saving intervention in the moment. It's getting people off the streets in an emergency during severe weather event with really minimal amenities, right? A warm place to sleep, generally a congregate setting, right, with cots. It's largely survival-based, and it's, a lot of times it's walk-up, right? It's people can walk up, receive the services, stay safe in the moment, and then are often returned back to the streets. What we're proposing is transitional housing where people access the facility through our coordinated housing access system, prioritize based on vulnerability and suitability to be successful in this kind of setting, and then we provide them with a whole lot of support and care. We give them all the structure and support that they need to stabilize and then get into permanent housing, right? So, this isn't intended to be a forever home, as we like to say. It's intended to be a place where they're for 30, 60, 90, maybe 120 days, but really not much longer than that, with the goal of getting them stabilized and into permanent housing as quickly as we can, right? So that we're working towards self-sufficiency. So, this is intensive case management services. It's 24/7 onsite staffing. It's peer supports, it's behavioral health resources, access to physical health resources, workforce training, rent well courses, right? So that they can gain the skills that they need to maintain housing on their own, and it's a much more intensive, structured level of care than you might see in an emergency shelter. This isn't an emergency shelter. This is transitional housing. Those things look very different, and that's what we're proposing here.
I have a couple Commissioners, I have a couple Commissioners, if anybody wishes to testify, please fill out a card and we will take you in order. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I encourage the folks that did not watch yesterday's session on this to please watch that. When someone says homeless shelter, that, I think that's a picture that a lot of people in general think of, and that's certainly not what's taking place here. We're not building anything. We are really creating, as Adam Brown has stated, transitional housing. This is not our first. There are approximately 90 people that are being served in Clackamas County roughly at this time around the county, and those fears that people, or that vision that people are talking about, isn't materializing, it's not there. We've been at this for over a year and a half. So, I think it's important to make a distinction between the two, and if you go by any of those facilities, you're not gonna experience that. The other thing I think is really, really important to state, especially for the business community, I've been a small business owner in this county for, prior to being a Commissioner, for 25 years, and I will say that the businesses that I've heard from have asked for help over the last several years, prior to COVID, for years. What are you gonna do about it? There's people sleeping on our doorstep, so on. This is a partial remedy to that problem. So, that's what I have. Chair?
Thank you very much. Commissioner West?
Adam, thanks for being here. Just clarification and transparency, it's my understanding that someone could be homeless on the streets and placed in this facility. The goal is not to go back on the streets, but to transition to permanent housing, but homeless people will be directly moved from the streets into this property. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, with that said, though, with that said, the difference is, is that the model is designed in a way to not let them, to get them off the streets permanently, so it's not temporary, but homeless people, for, just so we're clear, sometimes it feels like we're splitting hairs, but I think it's, definitions matter.
No, it's an important distinction, Commissioner, and you're absolutely right. This is an intervention that's very structured and intended to put people quickly on a path to supportive housing. They may come from living on the streets, or it may be, you know, folks who just recently lost their housing, right? Their duration of homelessness may have been shorter, but it also certainly will be people who have been chronically homeless, right, living on the streets for a long time. And that's part of the vulnerability prioritization, but you're right in that this is not an emergency intervention that's intended to just give people a very temporary overnight warm place to stay. This is a temporary home that's intended to give them the support that they need to access a permanent home. Shelter, emergency shelter is not even really a temporary home, right? It's a place to stay safe. This is more like a temporary home with supportive services that gets them to that next place.
And then I have one more quick follow-up question to that. Much of the population is not drug addicted. I mean, some of it is, some of it isn't. There is a high percentage that is, but not everybody is, right?
No.
But there will be people with addiction issues. They can't use onsite, but there will be people with addiction issues that are housed at the Quality End, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So, here's my question, that is a thought that, as I dive in this area, a lot of data and evidence shows that someone needs stability to lower recidivism rate to addiction a year or maybe up to 18 months-ish is what a lot of data and studies show. And so professionally, I know that it takes a longer time of stability for that. How do we know, or are we concerned that even though we may stabilize them for 120 days, that even as they transition into permanent housing within the county, that they're just not gonna really struggle with addiction services behind four walls and be isolated, and then have those real issues that are dangerous for an addict when they're isolated alone? Because this isn't really providing maybe a long enough stability for people with addiction issues based on current data that we know of.
So, this isn't necessarily addictions recovery housing. It's not intended to be that, and our community does have, actually, our providers say, plenty of resources for recovery-focused housing specifically. But we know that folks who will find themselves here, there's a lot of different intersecting barriers they're facing, one of which is likely to be addiction of one type or another, right? Whether it be drugs or alcohol or whatever. Our service providers are equipped to support people with those issues. They do this work every single day. Many of the Commissioners have been touring different motels. They hear this directly from our service providers. Drug use, alcohol use, is a reality in our community, and our job is to lean into that, assess people and where they're at, and make a decision about whether or not this facility in particular provides the level of support that they need so that they're not, to your point, isolated in their room. If a person is in that place specifically, they need to be somewhere else. And our job through that prioritization, the vulnerability assessments, is to make sure we're directing them to the right place. So, if they have that level of need, our job is to usher them somewhere else, right, to other resources in our community. We're gonna make sure that the people that we place here, that we're really, really confident that they can be successful in this setting, and they may need supportive services beyond that, and that's part of what we do after we transition them out.
So, Commissioners, I think in interest of time, we have a lot of people in the audience that want to talk about this. I suggest you write down your questions, and we'll have Adam answer all.
I thought last time I called, I was on hold.
Madam, you will be escorted out if we do not keep order in this room. Please fill out a card, bring it forward. I am not done, I, what, listen to me. What I said is, Adam will answer the questions at the end of everybody coming up. That's what I'm trying to communicate to you. Everybody who wants an opportunity to speak will be granted an opportunity to speak. I've asked Commissioners if they would hold their comments also and tell, and make notes just so we can answer all the questions. That's what I'm trying to, please don't yell at us. Please don't yell at, we're not yelling at you. We are trying to answer everything that comes forward in an orderly, business-like, professional manner. We understand your questions. Your questions and concerns are wonderful. So, up next, Maureen, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Scholl. Do you want to wait now? Do you want to wait or do now?
I do have comments to make on the continuum of care, but I'm gonna hold that till Commissioner comments.
And I think they're important. Everybody's comments are important, but I've got some advice. Let's get through everybody's comments. I have a notebook. I'm writing down my observations. I'm writing down the information we learned yesterday, last week, that I'm more than happy to share, but please, let's keep order. Up next, Maureen Granger. Please come forward. You have, please introduce yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Maureen Granger, and I live in Happy Valley, and I am a concerned citizen. And I think that I will speak for the 678 people that have signed a petition to stop the location of this homelessness transition shelter. I don't have a problem with the policy, except the fact that it needs to be a lot more robust. We need to know all of the details, and I don't know how that's disseminated to the public, but what I can say is that the homelessness is a situation where you see mental health that is the overarching issue that I see, not because I'm an expert, but because I know that when I see people on the streets, they appear to have a lot of issues. There is a lot of drug addiction, and there is a lot of alcohol addiction. There's a lot of depression in these individuals. And so what is important is that we find a place that is not right on Sunnyside and 205. It needs to be in a location. These people are not gonna be out and about. They are in a rehab facility. Those counseling classes that they will have don't require them to go outside and to travel around the places that are part of the community. They need to be in the facility, getting used to their homes, their rooms, their bathrooms, their kitchens. They don't need to be out in the community doing things that are not going to lead them to success. They need success by staying in their rooms, getting familiar, and I'll tell you, safety is absolutely imperative. I know that Commissioner Savis mentioned that, safety for the participants, safety for the staff that is going to be servicing these people, safety for the community. I think that there is a lot more that needs, you know, red flags are critical. Red flags for the project are not a bad thing. They are things that every project manager does. You should list them out, say, what are we gonna run into? And I know that that's probably part of the plan, but I definitely want to see that as well. And I'll tell you, one red flag that I see is if somebody gets exited from the program, are they going to be going quietly? Are they going to be able to get out? And where do they go? Where do they go if they are not complying with all of the rules and regulations? So.
Thank you very much for coming forward. We will answer your questions. We're taking notes. Up next, Marius Musul, is that correct? Please introduce yourself, state your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. I appreciate the time that you're giving me here. My name is Marius Musul. I'm from Happy Valley. I am a business owner. My business is 664 feet from this facility. I have actually moved there two years ago from downtown Portland where I had to move my office because we had homeless people at the bottom of my building, and my clients did not want to come and visit me at my office, so they were afraid to come in. That's why I moved my business there. And when I heard about this two weeks ago, I And when I heard about this two weeks ago, I became very concerned, and I'm afraid of what is going to be there. And I understand that this needs to be done, but this is absolutely the wrong location for it, absolutely 100% wrong location. Commissioner Smith has mentioned at the October 18th meeting, at the Business Alliance meeting, that this was an experiment. We don't know how this is going to work out. Why are we going to put this experiment in a place where we have businesses that are supporting families in the community? These are business owners, and all they're trying to do is survive after COVID with these restaurants. And now they're going to have to worry about people from this facility going over there. And we're splitting hairs between, is it transitional housing? Is it a shelter? It doesn't matter. It's the same group of people. We have specifically been told that it's bridge housing, so people off the street will come there. And so these are people that are drug addicts. They may blow up, they may get angry, they may come outside, which is what they already do. That Office Depot that's behind there, someone went in and they wanted to use their power outlet and charged their phone. This was a homeless person, weren't allowed to do that. So what did they do? The next day they come, they smear feces all over the entrance. This is what we're worried about. Why not put this at a truck stop someplace else, right? And the problem we have is time and time again, we see that we cannot trust the government. What do I mean by that? If I have a pothole by my house, and I call and I call, it takes months to fix it. If I see an abandoned vehicle, and I call and I call, it takes months to get it removed. If I see someone dump garbage or a boat in the middle of Clat's Up Road, it takes months and months to get it removed. And so when we have this problem at this facility, and there's an issue, and there are druggies out there doing whatever they're doing, we're going to be calling 911 and nonemergency. And how long is it going to take to make sure that those people are addressed and removed? And by that time, the person that just opened the restaurant there, the Dave's Chicken and Baja Fresh, those guys are going to be out of business because no one's going to take their kids there. I'm not going to take my kid there. I'm not going to shop there. If if my seven-year-old is going to have to go there and look at some guy doing drugs out there. And I know you're telling me it's not going to happen. This is an article from Willamette Week. This came out two days ago. It's online.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming forward. You can submit the rest of your testimony online at bcc@clackamas.us. We have a ton of people who want to testify.
I just want to finish that the article shows right across the street, there's prostitution, there's people doing drugs. It's online, so I
Thank you very much.
Hope you take a look at it. Thank you so much.
Sonia Welsh, please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Sonia Welch, Oregon City. I have been a resident of Multnomah County since I was born, and I had a brother who was drug addicted, and drug and alcohol was his his vice, and he passed away. So I have a history of being around drug addiction and homelessness. He he had a home, and he allowed some of his friends to come in and to try to help rehabilitate them. I've been around it for a really long time, and he ended up losing his home. My point is, I'm as concerned about the homeless and not having shelter as anyone. I have a huge heart when I see somebody on the street. It breaks my heart, but I don't see anybody actually coming with an actual solution of the core of the issue. The core of the issue is mental health and chemical dependency. And this gentleman, he says, you know, a portion of them are drug addicted, 75% of them are drug and alcohol users. And I would guess that those studies aren't even accurate. I believe that it's higher than that. You know, the people that want to rehabilitate, they will, but I just don't think that this type of solution in this area around families who are, you know, trying to have businesses and prosper, I think that you really have to listen to them. It's, you know, a situation where I've been downtown in affordable housing areas, there is a lot of crime, brand-new buildings that have affordable housing. I've parked my car, had it bashed into, you know, things stolen. It's not fair to the people that are around. And I I believe that there is a place, probably a different location for this, but I don't know what model you have looked at in success rates. You know, I think that there'd be more information that the people need to understand in order to support it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Up next, Lori Larson. Please come forward, introduce yourself, state your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Lori Larson, and I live in Happy Valley. I did grow up in northeast Portland. I have so many questions on this. How many of the nine people that are sitting up here are of you guys are living close to this proposed spot? I know probably the majority of all of us are within a five or 10-mile radius, and that's what's kind of concerning to me, as we're the ones that are actually going to be, quote, "in the trenches of this," when I don't believe, doing a little research, that a lot of you are located close to where these proposed places are. I read on your site, and I'm just getting some information really quick, you listed you had 341 responses. There's roughly 250,000 residents in Clackamas County, I believe, more than that. And so how how did you go off of what 341 people that gave you results? And I know with the people that I'm here with, we're business owners, nonprofit founders, residents, we all pay taxes. Not one of us got an email. You emailed what it said, 11,000 or 1,050 people, I can't remember what it was, sorry. I know that number is completely off. But who who emailed these people and asked what business owners were, reached out to and asked their opinion, because none of us were? We all have kids that have grown up or kids that are still in school here. It's so concerning on so many levels. It's just insanity to think that you're, what is the percentage of 341 people? It's not even probably a quarter of a percent of the residents in Happy Valley that pay taxes. You guys can send us our tax statements. Why didn't you send a notification to all of the residents that way, proposing some information? Or it just seems as a resident to me and someone that's extremely involved with youth sports, with kids, with nonprofit foundations, that none of this was presented to any of us the proper way. I mean, who 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 got contacted? Who were the chosen people? What businesses proposed the or got it that agreed to it? That's and and the frustrating part is, I have called and left no less than 10 messages in the last two weeks. The director of the program, that I was told there's only one person, we'll call you back. It was after last meeting. I was on hold for the last meeting to talk, and then the call and Scott turned off because I believe you had an engagement after that you handed the gavel to somebody else and that things were. It's so frustrating to all of us that want to express how we feel. And a few things are with regards to a homeless camp or transitional housing, irregardless, they're on the streets at some point, or you would not be accepting them into their program, into your program.
Thank you very much for coming forward. I appreciate. We will do the best to answer your questions. Up next, Tammy Egertie, is that right?
Edgerly.
Please introduce yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Tammy Edgerly, and I live in Damascus, but I've lived in Happy Valley for a long time. I'm also from northeast Portland, so I'm very familiar with a lot of the homeless problems and everything like that. But I also oppose this for very many reasons. For there's a school that is really not that far away. I mean, are you guys, Mount Scott Elementary is like less than two miles away from this. Another thing that I've heard is that you guys have already secured the property. And if you secured it, you're doing your due diligence right now? So I guess my question is, is there really public discussion, and is this a done deal, and we're not aware of it? So that's another concern I have. As a business owner that's right over by Clackamas Town Center, I just feel like if you've seen Clackamas Town Center, we don't have Nordstroms there anymore, we have a lot more homeless people there, we're going to be bringing more homeless people in by when we do this. These people that have these addiction issues, that have these mental health issues, we have spent so money, so much money trying to solve these problems, and we still are not solving the problems. And to bring this in to a very, you know, family-oriented community and a big business community, there's so many businesses around there, and to have them exposed to the people, and I mean, I feel for these people, but the success rates on these people is not high. We weren't, if we, there's more people coming and becoming homeless than getting off the streets. There's not a lot of success stories. I don't know what the answer is, but I know one of the answers is not bringing them in to a family community where you're going to have kids going to Clackamas Town Center. You're going to, I mean, just the exposure there is, for those kids, is not great. And I mean, when they have their friends that come, who are the peoples that are staying in this place? If they have people that come, most likely, they're going to be bringing other drug addicts there. We're going to have a mess at Clackamas Town Center, and this is something you guys got to consider, because it's struggling right now as it is already. And do you guys want to ruin that area and not have all the businesses that are still there? I'm done.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Up next, Rod Upton. Sir, introduce yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi there. My name's Rod Upton, and I am a resident of Happy Valley. I've been there for 20-plus years. And where do you start? So kids, everything that everybody said back there, the kids, 10, 15 years ago, we never heard a siren in Happy Valley. And back in, what, 2003 or '04, the Clackamas, the light rail came in, I had a a Clackamas County police officer, get ready, the crime train's coming. And that's from a Clackamas County cop. So the crimes from that, and then you put the homeless shelter there, it, don't get me wrong with the all the words of transitional, this and that. I work out, I drive the the streets every day. I see the homeless, I see the garbage on I-84. All these people, I've I've offered them jobs. They don't want jobs. They don't want help. They want, and with the city that that legalizes drugs, I mean, what are we doing? It's the decay of society. The people don't want help, and if, and I'm the biggest supporter of that. If you want to help them, put them in an industrial area. Get them away from the residential. Put them out. I mean, Terry Emmert owns half of Clackamas County. I'm sure you guys could do a tax incentive, a tax incentive program with him and do a land exchange. I can build an industrial building. I mean, the the hotel, just a little bit of research that I did, the hotel is $12 million, and you guys paid 15. So, I mean, that's already going backwards, isn't it? I can do a tilt-up building, and you can put all the resources you want in there and help them, but put it away from residential residential area. I mean, you are what you hang around with. You bring in those people, they bring in their people, the drugs. I mean, right down on 42nd and off I-84, take the exit, go down, brand-new building right there. Here's, here's, here they are, shooting up right in the middle of the day. We're standing there going, you guys OK? They don't care. You load the needle, I'm sitting here right next next to you. Yes, it is a problem, but you guys have to be smart. I mean, what's the money grab? Where's it where's it coming from? What is your timeframe? You say, we're going to make a decision. What is the timeframe for you to make a decision on this process? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we're going to answer your questions at the end, and we're writing them down.
And also, I mean, the Marriott is right across the street, the new one in next to the Clackamas Town Center. If, did you offer them? I mean, that's relegated and into Clackamas Town Center. I mean, but my main concern is, get it away. Get it in an industrial area. Take them out to Terminal 5. Is there is there a homeless shelter in Lake Oswego?
Thank you very much.
West Lynn.
Thank you very much. This is not a homeless shelter. This is transitional housing. Up next, up next is Ruth Genovich. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. You may correct me. Please introduce yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much for having this meeting today. I was at, I did attend yesterday. My name is Ruth Jovanovic. I have lived in pretty much Clackamas area my whole life since the fifth grade. I just want to set a stage for you. I was married to a man who became basically homeless. He did drugs, he stole, he cheated. Anything he could get his hands on to get alcohol or drugs, that's what he did. So I appreciate and understand that need for what needs to be happening here. But I am also a senior citizen. I am a taxpayer. I am a grandmother. I am a mother. I have friends and wonderful people in this community that I care very much diligently for. And so I want to say I appreciate that need, but I also understand where we are at in this community. The my main concern is, and I've seen it over and over again, someone used the issue of 75% non, where you are actually being successful. I believe if you go back and look, statistics now, it's higher than that. They are not successful. Does that mean we want to throw them away and not appreciate who and what they are? That's not what I'm saying. But I can tell you right now, if I go across the street just that way at 8:30 at night, I will not get out of my car by myself. If I'm on this side over here, I'm much more comfortable. I'll go to Safeway, I'll go to them. Because of the different people that are coming here and the needs, we've had our house broken into, we've had a trailer broken into, and that's taken, basically stolen. So I'm going to be careful. My main concern is, though, I, we've had people talk about children and about grandchildren, but I'm talking about senior citizens who are concerned about being safe. They're already isolated. They're, you know, many of them don't have people to come and help them, but you you can't tell them to go out at night by themselves. Our community has worked very hard to make it through COVID. You know, it's been, we've had many, many businesses go out, and we want to continue to have them thrive here. We want people to come. If you look at the difference between Clackamas County and Washington Square, that is a thriving community over there. People are begging to get in there. Clackamas Town Center, we are losing all the time. Clackamas Town Center is one of the number-one trafficking for young adults. If you need more information on that, I've worked with transitional housing. I understand, I know where those are at. So I really want us to challenge ourselves. The other thing that's not been brought up, and that is the pedophiles and sex abusers, that will be part of this community that we are going to bring in. Someone brought up the schools that are here. We, our kids cannot go to Clackamas Town Center by themselves anymore. It's too dangerous. We can't, we can't send them to walk by themselves. So I know I'm over. The last thing is theft. So it is a big issue. I hope that, I thank you for your time, and I'll add the rest of my comments out there. Thank you.
I have one more gentleman that wants to talk on two different issues, but we had a large discussion on this yesterday. You can access that discussion online, and many of the concerns that you brought up here today was discussed yesterday. We will also continue to discuss about this later. Okay, Brainerd Bauer, am I pronouncing your name right? You have two cards. You want to talk about Turnkey, and then you want to talk about something else. So would you like to come forward and talk about Project Turnkey?
Yeah, just, I'll be brief. Yeah, my name is Brainerd Bauer. I'm a Clackamas County resident. I don't live near Happy Valley. I know the area. I do have property in Portland. I'm quite familiar with this topic. I could talk all day on it. I have a lot of thoughts and suggestions. I I don't want to discount anybody's concern from everybody talked about. I know every one of those concerns is right on mark. The concept of traditional, of transitional, what the little bit I've heard, from all I know, I'm quite intrigued by it. I could see something like what's being proposed working. Whether it's the right place, I don't know. Definitely, you know, drugs are a reality, you know, alcohol abuse. Definitely, uh, you know, drugs are a reality, you know, alcohol abuse, a reality. It's also a reality that, um, uh, drug dealing to our kids occurs through homeless people by the professionals. It's also a reality that a lot of stealing from our neighbors. I've seen this, I know this. So, these, these concerns people bring up are absolutely real. So, the topic I don't know has been really brought up, and that's really my question, is how strongly is law enforcement and making this kind of facility invisible to the community? How, how, how strong is that topic being considered? Is there a way to make it invisible so that anybody who's, you know, I heard the comment, "You are who you hang out with." Absolutely. So, if this allows other camps to come close, if it allows the buddies they had on the street to be there and all this manipulation to happen, and then all the rest of it, that's where the problem is. So, is there a way to make this invisible and have law enforcement involved in a way that access to the local alcohol place and all this is, and, and their local buddies to deal drugs and kids and stealing and just this hangout, this whole, if that can be prevented, then there's a chance. I mean, the concept's intriguing from all I know. I also see, that's why the idea of going to industrial area, I can also see that so that there's not access so easily and the, their buddies don't want to hang out with them. So, anyway, thank you.
Um, sir, stay here. You have submitted another card about traffic.
I have, I don't know.
Would you like to present that now, please?
Is that a good time?
You're already here, now is a good time.
Okay. Yeah, so, I, I also wanted to, to, to thank you for, uh, I mean, you're our elected representatives for being here. A few of you, I haven't brought up this topic before. I've had a contentious relationship with traffic engineering, but at the same time, we've made real progress on the safety of Redland Road.
Redland Road.
Redland Road, yeah. Uh, my business is right more Redland and Fishers Mill, but we're talking all of Redland Road, at least to Ridge Road. So, I want to thank you for allowing us to testify. I, I liked it when it was up front, but thank you. And the key is intelligent cooperation, um, and joint cooperation. But my, a few suggestions and, and the reason I want to raise it is, I'd like to see the speed reduced in the commercial zone to 35 miles an hour at all hours. It's been my request for a long time. What we've done already has made a huge difference. We went from accidents every week to zero. But, but done a lot of things, too lo, too much to get into. Um, I'd like to see Hen, uh, straighten Henrezi Road at Redland Road, straighten Fishers Mill Road at Redland Road, straighten with visibility Ferguson and Redland Road. Add Bank Super back into Redland Road at the bottom of Mile Hill. Used to exist, weren't accidents then when they were, was there, long time ago. Straighten with visibility Ridge Road in Redland Road. Cancel the ill-conceived concept of a left lane, left turn lane at Ferguson. There has been community outreach, far as I've seen, and I've been involved in some of it, community hasn't been in favor of this. So, look, please look at that. Review the assumptions. The congestion issue is nonexistent, that's a farce. The, I mean, the, our traffic engineering hires favorite consultants, gets grant money, and it goes forward without real consideration of the broader priorities. I know this. And I'm trying to be, find a way to be productive together. Cancel inconceived left lane at Bradley Road, perhaps a flashing yellow at Ferguson. Ensure white stop lines to the fog lines, in other words, how close somebody gets to the, to the main roads. If somebody driving down Redland Road can see that car approaching, that's been huge. We've made, we've made a lot of progress. We've made a lot of progress at Ferguson on that. Education community to improve driving behavior. I'm shocked, but we have influenced driving behavior. We do an outreach through the school or something, it, it's amazing. Never would have believed it. Replace the failing drain, drainage system under Redland Road east of Fishers Mill Road. It's already collapsed partly and we've done a Band-Aid to it, but it needs a permanent fix. So, thank you.
Uh, we have your written testimony. Yesterday, we talked about Redland Road specifically in our RTP, and that's the Transportation Plan Coming Forward. And I equivocally said, "All these federal monies that come in that Metro wants to grab for us, it seems like they're decided ahead of time and we don't get much traffic improvement monies for Redland Road or Beaver Creek Road that is listed in this." And this particular pot of money that we're talking about is within this particular zoning area of which parts Redland Road falls into. So, if you want to listen to that conversation yesterday regarding this, go online and I believe it's at the 10 o'clock session yesterday, and you can get more information about that. But yes, transportation is a big issue. Clackamas County is growing. And our roads are feeling it. And matter of fact, Clackamas County has five of the fastest-growing cities in the entire state of Oregon.
At, at the same.
The top 10 cities, Clackamas County has five of the fastest-growing. And from our point of view, there are 16 cities in Clackamas County and we're all scrambling trying to do the very best we can with limited resources for all the problems out there. Thank you for coming forward and take a look at that, and we have your testimony.
Thank you. We've made a lot of progress with very little money. At the same time, my number-one concern is saving Redland, is saving our community.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Uh, gentlemen, look, Mario Musso, you've already testified on Project Turnkey and you want to talk about affordable housing. Is it possible that you keep your comments to affordable housing because, please come forward?
I'm sorry, I didn't know we could go twice.
Well, you normally can. I mean, this gentleman came for his traffic, um, he wanted information on traffic to present to us. Normally, we don't, but you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, again, Mario Musso from Happy Valley. Um, I think, I'm not talking about Project Turnkey, but the overwhelming issue is home, with homelessness, part of it is housing affordability. And I am from a southern state, from Florida. And there, today, today this morning, I went and I looked on Lennar's website and you can buy a home for $250,000. You can go on Zillow and you can find new homes in Texas, 2,000 square feet, $200,000, 12-foot ceilings. We do not have that here. Why is that? Why is it that Lennar can build those homes in Texas and Missouri and Florida for those prices and they cannot do it here? Why can't we bring those builders here and have them testify and explain to the commissioners and everyone else why it is that here it is $400,000, $500,000 for a thousand-square-foot home? One of the reasons is, for example, permitting costs in Florida are $2,000 to $3,000. Here, to, to build a home in Happy Valley, my permits were $34,000. Just the property, the land, the, the less-than-quarter-acre or whatever it is, 10,000-square-foot plot of land is $200,000. Is it because we're restricting some of these farms, whether or not they can build homes there? And I understand the concept of having this urban boundary and saying, "Okay, let's not overbuild this area, let's protect the farmland." But that's part of the reason why we're having these very expensive homes, and that's why we have homelessness, because people are in dire need of finding homes. The, another issue is, I had a plumbing company call me and tell me they cannot find plumbers because Oregon has one of the most difficult licensing requirements to get plumbers to work here. And so, what happens? You have a shortage of tradespeople and to put in a light fixture, it cost me $800 to have someone come in. To put in, to install the, the outlet so I can have a hot tub in my backyard, $5,000. Insane, right? And why is that? Why can't Clackamas County be a leader and say, "Hey, let's do supply-side economics, let's lower the burdens on these businesses, allow them to come in here and build these beautiful resort-style communities that you see in Florida. You see them in Texas where people have pools, amenities and things. And you could have a beautiful view of the mountain and have a golf course resort and there'll be trees there and people will have places to play and you will have half a million-dollar homes and hundred-thousand-dollar condos and everyone can hang out and have a good life." But we're not doing that. Instead.
Thank you very much, I appreciate.
Via Project Turnkey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to circle back around. I'm going to start with Adam. You heard a lot of concerns today. I've written down, I think, most of them. Would you like to start addressing, um, some of these concerns? Let's start with drug addiction. I think you answered that.
Yeah, um, well, Chair, I think, you know, one of my reactions is that, that there's a lot of stress and fear and anxiety about some of what we see in our community. And that's leading to us talking past each other a little bit, I think. And I, you know, I get up and I come here every day trying to advocate for the county, our wise use of resources and make really strategic investments to solve some of the biggest issues facing our community. And a lot of what we've contemplated here with this site is intended to solve for what we've heard from folks. And we've, you know, we can't fast-forward time and give people a look into what it will look like when we put this thing into use, but our success is contingent upon it not looking and feeling and being like what's been described here today. We know that. We're, we're committed to something different or it won't be successful and you all won't stand for it. So, yesterday when I, when Commissioner Scholl asked about, "Well, what are our mechanisms for that?" I said, "Well, this is a scope of work. Now, we go out and we find service providers to deliver these services and we manage against that." And when I said in, in some of those materials that, um, the site will be managed in a way that is consistent with what the county is requiring, well, that's how we manage against it. We, we have that control over this site, right? We don't have that control over the broader private market, but we certainly can control it when we acquire a site, we build the programming, we manage the service provider. So, I, that's my initial reaction, is that I think we're talking past each other a little bit. This is intended to solve for a lot of, of what's been described and we have the ability to be successful at it.
Um, I have some comments here I'm going to try to tackle. Yesterday, Commissioner Savis and I toured the Rockwood Center out in northeast Portland and 181st and Sunrafell. And we looked at their program and what they were doing with every single of the items that was mentioned out here today. You know, it's really worth viewing. Some of those providers that offer services there will offer the same services here. There are 20 different providers that address the problems that these people see. Uh, that center has been open for a year and a half, I believe, about 18 months.
Eighteen months, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And they've really had remarkable success in the transition housing model because they get services, health services, they get mental health services of which Clackamas County is heavily in going, being invested in, is to providing mental health services. They have a curfew. Sex offenders are not allowed to be in there. Drugs are not allowed. Alcohol is not allowed. We said we would fence it. Yesterday, we talked about walk-ups. What do we do with people on walk-ups? And you addressed that. People just not, cannot come and park, they cannot water, they cannot do a whole variety of things because when they come in to this center, they are provided housing and services. And their promise is that they will behave themselves or they won't be here anymore. And then they will go back out onto the streets exactly where you people said they are right now. We are trying to solve a problem, ladies and gentlemen. We are trying to solve a very, very important problem. Project Turnkey is in Multnomah County, it's in Washington County, it's in Marion County, almost every county in Oregon, and it has been very successful. In fact, Washington County has two of them and they're bidding for a third one. They're trying to go to the legislature for more money to, because it has been so successful. I understand when somebody came up to me and says, "We can't trust government." You know, I don't trust government a lot of the times either. I turn on the television, I go, "Oh, holy cow, what are you people doing?" But I will say this, um, I don't like being in this position either. I never thought, when I became the commissioner, that I would have to spend as much time dealing with the homeless situation as we have. We've had people plead to us to do something. And we are adopting a model that we think will work. Now, you may have heard of our newly-elected governor, Tina Kotek, and she has issued a homeless emergency of which we have no choice. And this is the fourth declared emergency in 24 months for this county, and we've grown weary of that. And we have had our rights taken away in the cover of, "Oh, this is an emergency and the state government knows better than the county government." And that's a horrid way to manage anything. And so, what I said to the governor, I says, "Look, Governor, we have reduced homelessness in Clackamas County." But what she said was, "That's nice, Clackamas County, you've done a very good job, I commend you." Well, I'm going to put you in Region 1 with Multnomah County and the City of Portland and Washington County, and you're in Region 1 and I'm your incident commander. I am your incident commander and I'm setting up MAC teams and we're going to go out and evaluate how you're doing through our emergency management structure. That's not how you handle homelessness, through an emergency management structure with a military-type situation from the top down. And I told her that. And I says, "Governor, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but what you have decided is not going to work. It works best through the, um, Housing and Human Services Department and we need those people at the table." So, we are getting pressure from every possible angle, every possible angle on this. Also, um, said this is not secured. We still do not know how much money is coming in from Project Turnkey advocates. Adam, do you address the timeline on this possible purchase?
Yeah, Chair. So, on December 8th, you approved a purchase and sale agreement for this property. That, that agreement was fully executed on December 12th, when the owner signed their, their side. That agreement had a 75-day feasibility contingency. There are two primary components to the feasibility contingency. One is conducting due diligence and our acceptance of the due diligence findings. The second piece is board approval to proceed with the closing. So, Stephen can correct me if I'm wrong, but it requires your affirmative acceptance of the due diligence findings and proceeding to closing. It will not proceed to closing without affirmative action from you. So, with regard to that timeline, um, our due diligence, the 75 days expires at the end of this month, I believe it's February 25th. I don't have the number, the date in front of me, but you have to give affirmative approval to proceed and accept that feasibility contingency by that date.
What about law enforcement and security? We have, um, the county DA and we have law enforcement who have been helping in these programs. You want to explain that a little bit? And we also will have private security, correct?
Yes. So, we work really closely with our law enforcement partners, the District Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office. And, and frankly, they're some of our biggest advocates because we're doing this program today in two leased sites and scattered sites throughout the community. And they have found tremendous success in those sites. And I asked Deputy DA Bill Stewart, "What's the barrier to doing more and more success?" And he said, "More transitional housing units." And I said, "Well, we can do that. We have the resources that we need to give you access to more rooms, more supportive services and, and get more folks into this supportive setting." So, that's kind of the, the setup, right? We have those partnerships and we've talked a lot about, what do those partnerships need to look like specifically for this site and going forward, right? So, that, those, those relationships are already in place. They support this, they're going to be right here alongside us every step of the way to make sure it's safe and secure and, and a good resource for the community.
Okay. Commissioner Savis, you're up, and then Commissioner West.
Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Scholl, excuse me.
Yeah.
Are we doing, are we doing, Commissioner comments?
Well, Commissioner Savis is up and we're still on this topic.
Yeah, okay.
And I think you wanted to speak as well. And I think you wanted to speak as well.
Well, no, go ahead. I'll, I'll wait till Commissioner comments.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I just want to just, first of all, just say this. I, I think that I'm tolerant and respectful of people, but not all are. So I just ask the people in the audience that, when you were speaking, we were quiet and respectful. So I just ask that you do so, okay, as well? So chuckles and laughs, you know, I, it's not going to bother me, but it does bother some people. So I think respect is a two-way street, so I, I applaud those who have been respectful and just advise maybe everyone do the same. What I did want to say, and I got chuckles the last time I said it, but I'm going to say it again. I've been a business owner almost my entire adult life. Started out when I was really young. I've owned locations in three different counties, operated businesses in three different counties, obviously. And I, and I, and I was a victim of crime, several crimes, theft, all kinds of stuff. But, and I can say here today, even at my home, I've had crime in my home, in my area, that the crime and the people that have been caught have not been homeless people, you know? When the last crime, even a recent one, the police responded to his residence, nice home, nicer house than mine. So I don't think we should conflate and think that all crime is, is homeless people. The first, as a commissioner, 10, over 10 years ago, when I did on the first homeless count, the first couple I met, the first homeless family I met, homeless people that I met and interviewed them, was a man, a woman, and their child. Neither of them had a drug problem, not a one. Their issue was that they had domestic disputes, he was arrested, and they settled it, and because of that, he had a record. And, and rents went up, that was during the time about six, seven years ago, or actually 10, 12 years ago, when rents start shooting up. And a lot of people economically become homeless, not because of a habit. Some people's addictions happen after they're homeless because they were economically became homeless. So meaning, they couldn't afford the rents, they're in despair, and then, then they, then they adopted either an addiction or whatnot. It's not always the case. I mean, there's all different kinds of scenarios. My, my point is this, is that, you've heard this before, we, the voters have said to fund this measure, you look at all the surveys here in the last several years, the number one issue on people's minds is, is us, the government, doing something for the homeless people, the demand. And, and to the voters who've passed those measures to fund it, you know, that's our job, all of us. We have the Metro Housing Bond to build housing, affordable housing, housing. We have the Metro Supportive Housing Services to provide the services for mental health addiction, for drug treatment, and all those things. As, as Chair Smith said, she and I both and staff went out to a facility out in Rockwood, a, a rougher area than Clackamas County, I think has got a reputation for that. And I didn't see what you all envisioned. We are, we are currently housing approximately 90 people. So I want to get away with the terms, terms matter. So turnkey is simply a funding process to acquire transitional housing. It can be a hotel, it can be an apartment building, but, but turnkey in and of itself is really a funding means to build transitional housing, not shelters. We're not, when I, anyone in this region, anyone who watches TV or reads the newspapers thinks of shelter, they think of an outdoor facility, houseless homeless people that are loitering around, they see tents, they see a lot of drug, drug activity, all, that's what people envision when you say homeless shelter. That is not going to happen here. And as I said yesterday, I will be the first person on this board to vote to shut a facility down that looks like that, behaves like that, or is that. So I, I'll stand by that, and you have this all recorded, so I'm on the record for that. And I don't, I, I, I think I would have support for that, that action as well. So the facilities where we're housing approximately 90 people right now in the, in the transition mode right now, with hotel rooms or so forth, there's 90 people who've been going for over a year. What you all have said today, we're concerned about that, but that's not materializing. Now, someone asked, do you have one nearby you? Mile and a half from my house, there's a facility right there where those people are housed, and what you're all concerned about, again, is not materializing. Sure, there's always going to be an incident, you know, a neighbor down the street in a normal residential neighborhood is going to have an issue, the police show up. I mean, so there, there are some instances here and there related to homeless and not related to homeless where the police respond. But the, this issue is growing, and the businesses especially have said, do something, do something, whether you're a Portland business or whether you're a local business. We had people here in the last year with their businesses saying, I've had people around my business, they're loitering or they're breaking in, I've got phone calls from people, so we are doing something. And there are successes. Sure, there are people out there that cannot be helped, we know that. And we, and our staff will navigate that. If they know they can't be helped, and, and they're not going, they're not going to be eligible for this program to begin with. They're not going to be, if we do acquire, if we do follow through with our due diligence and all that stuff and acquire this facility, those people aren't going to be eligible to be there in the first place. There's, if anyone who, again, I, I, I want to tell people to, number one, look at the packet from yesterday's session and watch, watch it as well. And I think a lot of your concerns will be allayed in that we're not going to allow what you're, what we're all saying to happen at this particular facility. In order to be, and it's not our first one, by the way. We do have a facility in an industrial area right now, and that's going to be expanded slightly for certain populations that might be not ready for transitional housing, that is a shelter environment, a pod kind of a shelter environment, not tents, but a pod. So we've been at this for a while, and we are pretty adamant. I think I can say, I won't say it for my colleagues, but I, I've heard from my colleagues, we don't want to do it the Portland way. And we're not going to do it the Portland way. Now, there are successes in Portland, okay? But that's not, that's not what makes the news or the headlines. What makes the headlines are the stuff that we all fear, and we are working our due, our, to our best to make sure that we don't, you know, emulate that in any way. So as a business owner, for 25 years in this county, not including my past, past years, I share those concerns and I lived it. I, I, I lived, I lived through all that stuff. But the houses crisis we have today, I didn't have to experience. So I, I was fortunate, like 12 years ago, it was not an issue like it is today. But with that said, Chair, I'm just going to hand it back to you and say that, you know, your concerns are being taken seriously, and I, I feel confident that that is not, what your worst fears are, are not going to materialize at this particular facility.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. We still have a person online who's been very patient. Commissioner Scholl, do you want to speak now?
On Commissioner comments, waiting for them.
You're waiting for Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I can do mine on Commissioner comments.
Okay, thank you. Tony, would you invite the person online to introduce themselves and remind them they have three minutes?
I'll begin with Rhonda Ferensak. Ms. Ferensak, please state your name and area of residence. You have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Rhonda Ferensak, Clackamas County. What I was going to say has pretty much been touched by most people, but question for Commissioner Savas. You said you visited one of these transitional housing facilities. Was that a scheduled visit, like they knew you were coming, kind of like the Biden border visit, where they can clean up and make everything look great? Or did you go unannounced? That's a question. Funding. Okay, so you're going to buy a building. Where is the, you got, there's upkeep, where's the money coming from? I was told this was, you guys were given federal money to purchase this property, and, and, but yet, okay, where's the funding continually coming from? Federal money is still taxpayer money, and, and I think that needs to be answered, and maybe it is in this document, you guys, 24-page document you guys sent, available. Also, police are, are, are spread thin as it is. I moved my parents out of Portland. I grew up in southeast felony flats. Moved my parents here to our area to avoid all of that. They live not too far from these transitional housing situations. It's a poop show, guys, it's a poop show. Great if the one you visited, Paul, was running well, but that wasn't the case for, for where my parents came from. I've already called local businesses. If this is, this housing facility is going to be where you guys are planning for it to be, I already told the businesses there, I'm not going there, not by myself, not with my child, and I don't even like going to Clackamas Town Center by myself for that matter. And I suggest you talk to security at Clackamas Town Center because they can give you an earful of what's already going on. So don't want this to be a big fat, I told you so, but if this project does go through at that location, I'll be the first to come, come there and tell you guys I told you so. So that's all I really have to say about that at this point.
Chair.
Go ahead.
I just want to respond to the lady's question real quickly. So the, yeah, our visit yesterday, it was planned, so, you know, we didn't go there unannounced, but there are two facilities in Clackamas County. One's, one's a mile and a half from my house, the other one's two and a half miles from my house. I drive by them, one of them every day, several times a day, actually. And the other facility, I drive by probably three or four times a week. Now, I've been on the property, I've been near the property, I've walked around the property, matter of fact, I'm going out there again. Do I tell them I'm coming? No. I don't. So just answer the lady's question.
Thank you. Madam, do you have an additional comment? If so, you need to come forward. You need to introduce yourself, come forward. And please be brief, I don't remember your area of residence.
Happy Valley, and my name is Lori Larson. I just wanted to say, Lori Larson, yeah. I just wanted to say one thing, kind of touching on what you were saying about the crime and the people out here. I'm a single mom, I have two boys, one's away at college, and I just wanted to quickly, since we're all kind of touching about the, and this, the homelessness or crime increase, I went outside of my house on Monday, or, I'm sorry, Saturday at 5:00 AM to find somebody breaking into my car and caught them right in the middle of it, which I chased after them. They stole my son's wallet, and that is already, we called the police, so there's, it's on record if you want to prove that it, that actually happened. But spreading the word through friends and on Facebook, there's been such an influx already of the crime out here and the break-ins and the doing, wrongdoings that they're, you know, from breaking into homes or cars or businesses. So that is a huge concern for me. Number one, being a single mom, citizen resident out here already with the crime increasing so much, is having people that are unhoused, on drugs or not on drugs, but in a position where they're on, on the streets that, that I feel like they're the ones that are doing the majority of the break-ins. And so it was just coming for me to presenting a story that kind of tied in that that did happen. It was an extremely scary situation to walk outside my home at 5:00 AM to be met with somebody inside my son's car. And I guess knee-jerk reaction, I ran and slammed the door on him and chased after him with my dog. We didn't get him, and he stole my son's wallet, but that's a huge concern for me. And I feel like our safety has, is just diminishing here. So that was it. Thank you.
Yes. By the way, the online caller, she wanted to know where all this money was coming from. Well, as a matter of fact, the reason why we're in this situation, because Clackamas County residents approved two referrals on a vote. You voted, number one, for the Metro Housing Bond several years, many years ago, and then again, the Supported Housing Services Measure came up to a vote, which voters approved. You want to know where the money came from? It has come from the voters who said, yes, go ahead and tax me. On both of these, I was in opposition, and I said so. I went on record as opposing increased taxes for this. Additionally, the legislature passed Project Turnkey twice to allow us to do this, and the governor and the legislature have just sent over different pots of money. You want to know, so this just is one, one big thing, it's several pots of money coming in, mainly, it's voter-approved. Hey, there's a lot of stuff the voters approve that I don't like. I have to follow the law. So you want to know how we got here? This is how we get here. Tony, anybody else online?
At this time, I do not have anyone registered. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary. Sir, come forward. Please introduce yourself, your area of residence.
My name is Jim Birdsell.
Sir, you need to sit in the chair and do that so everybody can hear you, because this is recorded, and there may be people online wanting to know who you are.
Okay. My name is Jim Birdsell. I'm a resident of Happy Valley, I guess, I mean, I never do this, Happy Valley. Johnson Creek and Bell Avenue is where I live, so I just, I, I, I really didn't want to talk about, I wanted to say that years ago, when I was, I got out of the service in the early 70s, I had a pretty bad anxiety problem, and I had been put on Valium and things like that. I started drinking heavily. So I was pretty messed up when I got out of the service, and I couldn't hold a job very well. And so I can relate in somewhat to a lot of these homeless people that are out there these days. But, you know, I met a woman, we had a baby, and I realized I had to change or get out of that situation, and I bought a little four-plex, and I had to borrow the money for 35% at a finance company to get started, and I bought it on a, on a contract. The point I'm making on that is the fact that I did kind of turn my life around, and I made something myself. These people that are out there probably can do the same. I can't speak for everyone, everybody's different. We're, we're all kind of the same, though. We're all in where we're at in life, we're, we're there because of what we did, okay? Or what we tried to make of ourselves. So there's a lot of people out there that are probably in that homeless situation that can turn their lives around. I do believe that there's got to be some kind of a framework, otherwise, I don't see how you could expect these people that are living in the environment they're living, that have the problems they have, unless they see some kind of a framework to kind of keep them on track, too, so. But I've got a little four-plex. For the last five years, I've left it vacant. For 40 years, I had to keep that, I had to get that thing producing the first three months I had it. For 40 years, roughly, it, it made money. But five years ago, when this pandemic, three, four, whatever, I, well, about, about 10 years ago, I started renting to people that were coming through the county. Home Forward was, was, was an outfit that I dealt with. And I went to Catholic charities, I sat down with people like, looked a lot like yourselves that talked to me about what they were trying to do and everything, and I thought, this is great, we'll try to help these people out. I wanted to help somebody. I think it's been part of my nature. But anyways, what I found out real quick was, I had some of the worst people show up, and it got to be where, it got so bad that finally I just had to shut things down. I, I had my trash cans were just full of needles. I had people moving into, with tenants, tenants that had been sober and straight for years and years, they were doing quite well. All of a sudden, they've got this other input that came in, and, and it just all went to the dickens. But there was no framework. All I could do is just do the landlord stuff. And the thing is, when the moratorium happened on the evictions, too, to me, that scared me out of, I just, I can't rent. But not only that, when I let, when things went so bad that I had to just get everybody out, I live in a different area, so the property was left vacant. Well, when that happened, doors got kicked in. Pretty soon, every unit that I've got is just destroyed. And so I'm trying to put all that back together now, and I lay awake at night thinking, you know, and I talked to a fellow at church a while back here that's encouraging me to try to help the homeless. Well, yeah, but for three years that I've been living out at the four-plex because I can't leave it vacant, I've met so many homeless people that I've had, I've come, I've left it vacant for a couple of days, come back, and I find this guy inside, and it's kind of a young kid, you know? And he's putting his stuff up in the closet, and I'm going, what are you doing? And he said, well, I, I moved in here. No, you can't do that. And I, so I had to get him out. There's so many stories I could tell you about these people, and some of them aren't here anymore. And, but still, I'm sorry about this, I didn't plan on this. I would like to do something with the building, help people out, but there's got to be a framework. I can't see, I can't see, as old as I am now, going through that same situation. And if the caliber of people that come in are the same type that I dealt with through Home Forward and through Catholic charities, it just isn't going to work.
Well, thank you, you make a good point. We are offering a framework, and you understand that there must be a framework that offers discipline and a path forward.
Yeah, and all this other, I have, I watched it for years, the people, you know, Yeah. And all this other, I, I have, I watched it for years, the people, you know, doing the damages and stuff. And last couple of months ago, they broke three windows out of my van. But you can't let that get to you. That's just a, that's just a guy that's messed up one night. There's so many of these other people that need help. So.
Thank you very much. Tony, do we have a new card? Okay. Thank you. Okay, Gary, would you like to continue?
Yes. So next is county administrator update. That's me. Because of the time, I'm going to skip my report, except to announce there will be no board business meeting next Thursday, February 9th, because you're having your board retreat all day next Wednesday, February 8th, and Thursday, February 9th. So the next board meeting will be Thursday, February 16th. But it will be an evening business meeting at 6:00 PM. So the next board meeting, Thursday, February 16th at 6:00 PM. That is my report today. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will offer commissioner communication. Commissioner Scholl, you're at first, you've been very silent, so take the time you need.
Yes. Good morning, Clackamas County. And thank you to everyone who came here today to express your views and concerns. It's very helpful to us to hear your comments. On warming centers, I'd like to thank everyone in the county who, in this last week, helped our warming centers take care of the needy. A special thank you to Leota Childress from the Hope Center in Malala. Commissioner West and I were there Monday morning. The place was full, um, with overnight guests. Um, if you can help them with warm clothes, that would be most appreciated. On tolling, the initiative to get a petition signed to put tolling on the ballot in 2024 needs your help. If you haven't done it already, go to votebefore tolls.org, get the petition, get it circulated, and keep your money in your wallet and not in ODOT's tolling wallet. That, if you make it happen, it'll be on the ballot in 2024. On law and order, yesterday, I did a ride along with Lieutenant Killinger from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. It was four hours of intense activity. We did traffic enforcement, dealt with trespassers, caught shoplifters. Uh, Clackamas Town Center, Dick's Sporting Goods gets robbed every hour, about 500 bucks worth. That's just one store. We look for stolen cars. I want you to know that the idea to enforce law and order 24/7/365, which I talk about all the time, can never be, uh, delegated to what Portland did a couple of years ago. In the last seven days in Clackamas County, there have been 12 stolen cars. In Multnomah County, in the same period of time, there have been over 200 stolen cars. Why is that? That's because car thieves know, if you come to Clackamas County and steal a car, you'll get pursued, you'll get caught, you'll get cuffed, you'll get prosecuted. They don't like to come here. Measure 110 has crippled law enforcement's ability to make arrests, and also crippled our DA's office ability to prosecute people caught with drugs. And I, I want to remind you, Measure 110 is affecting law and order because people in this state voted yes on that measure just a few years ago. Uh, we need a mental health and addiction facility to get these people off the street. People who are currently, yesterday, I saw a man rotting on the side of the street near Clackamas Town Center, because we don't have a place to put these people. The situation is overwhelming our law enforcement. And I'd like to ask you all to say thank you to one of our deputies or a city policeman whenever you can. It's very difficult. Uh, on Senator Finley's recent town hall, there's $2.7 billion of excess tax from 2022. Uh, it's averaged, uh, some $5,200 per tax return in the state. We want that to come back to you and not be, uh, used as, as, used as a tax credit. So contact your state rep on that. On the quality end in Turnkey, our inability to treat the mentally ill and drug addicted is our number one problem. We can put hundreds of millions of dollars into supportive housing, but until we can build a facility to provide for inpatient, long-term care, we're going to continue to have problems. Until we can repeal Measure 110, which is pushing drugs closer and closer to our people, we'll continue to have problems. Until we can appeal to our national government to control points of entry of killer drugs that are coming into our nation, we'll continue to have problems. Um, on the traditional homeless, that is people who, transitional homeless, people who are paying rent, can't afford it, drop into homelessness, they don't have a mental health or drug problem. Uh, we need help in Salem to change our current restrictive land use laws that are precluding us from building the residential projects we need to see built soon. We also need to bring down the cost of permitting that's causing the cost of our housing to be very high. As we show compassion for the unfortunate, the homeless, we also need to show respect and concern for those people in the communities who have bought a home, a business, are raising families, uh, paying rent, paying their mortgage, and have invested maybe everything they have into their community. We need to make sure they also are supported. Um, because of Measure 110, of the thousands of citations our police have assigned to people with drugs since Measure 110 has, has passed, uh, because they can't arrest them, um, many of them have been, all of them have been offered addiction counseling and help. And only, literally out of thousands, only a few have accepted that help. So, uh, this whole issue on supportive housing cannot be addressed just by building new housing, can't be addressed just by buying a turnkey. We need a full spectrum approach on all these problems in our society that are causing the people who came here today to feel compelled to speak out against these problems. And finally, thought of the day, do a crime in Clackamas County, and you will do the time. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you all for coming today. I appreciate hearing all of your input with this. Uh, one of the things I've done, um, as I've been sitting up here is communicating with my policy advisor, trying to pull together links for all of you that you can read about the Oregon Community Foundation report on Turnkey, um, and how it came into being. It was a result of the Association of Oregon Counties here in our state, the entire state, 36 counties, and the League of Oregon Cities, uh, with public policy, trying to come up what could be a solution to this crisis that we're taking. So I'm kind of seeing my job right now is making sure that, um, you know, just read the information, um, and, and see what you think about it. Uh, I've also asked people to, uh, my policy advisor, to go ahead and get the list of all the other counties in this state, and they're actually rural, urban, suburban. So it's across the continuum, whether you're out in eastern Oregon, whether you're on the coast, whatever, to get a list of, um, where these particular kinds of projects have been cited and how they're working. Rockwood is one of them. I didn't visit Rockwood the other day, but I have visited it, uh, before. So I think getting this information out is going to be important to you. The other piece that I wanted to share with you is I did talk to our National Association of Counties, and they did send me, uh, other information about counties across the United States that have used ARPA dollars, uh, looking at this similar framework. Alameda County, California, Buncombe County, North Carolina, Riverside County, California, Weber County, Utah, Washington County, Minnesota. Um, also Hennepin County's Homeless to Housing Initiative, or Dane County's Homes Hotels to Housing Program. The reason I'm garnering all this information is that I want to make sure that as we move forward with anything, that we're basing it on data. We're not the first ones to look at this. We're looking at how they're doing it, not just here with our other colleagues with 36 counties, but also nationally. And any links that I can send you that would at least help you get the structure of how we're trying to manage this would be, um, we'd be glad to do so. Um, I'm sorry that people felt uninformed. Uh, it's a big county, over 400,000 people. Yeah, it is hard to get, um, get the message out to everybody. I myself have taken in numerous kids throughout my, I've raised five kids on a farm in Camby, lived all my adult life in a rural community here in Oregon. Uh, and I, I live now in an urban area. Um, but I've taken in homeless kids. I've taken in, you know, made sure that, worked, I've said this before, with the Benedictine Sisters of Mount Angel, when, um, still working with their St. Joseph's Shelter. Because, uh, for me, this is also a, a matter of how we, as human beings, treat one another. And homeless people, I'm going to just read this and I'll stop. Homeless people roam city streets in tattered clothing and sleep on doorways or on a subway grates at night. Many of these are formal mental patients released from state hospitals. Thousands stand in line at soup kitchens because they have no other way of feeding themselves. Millions of children are so poorly nourished that their physical and mental development are seriously harmed. We have also seen the growing economic hardship and insecurity experienced by moderate income Americans when they lose their jobs and their income due to forces beyond their control. These are alarming signs and trends. They pose for our nation and our county, I'm going to add, an urgent moral and human challenge to fashion a society where no one goes without the basic material necessities required for human dignity. And that is from the U.S. Catholic Bishops, 1986, Economic Justice for All. So from my own framework, that's what motivates me to, uh, do this kind of work. So please look at the information that we can get out to you. Uh, thank you for coming today, and we will do everything we can to give you the space. And one other thing I want to add is that when we did a research, Adam, I don't think you were here, but when we were doing, um, an analysis of who was actually homeless, we went along the Springwater Corridor. And yes, we found people who were addicted. We found people who had mental health issues. But the more majority, believe it or not, were people that had lived in their community there, and because of like medical, um, issues and going bankruptcy or job loss, also ended up homeless. So we have to look at homelessness as the continuum of what it really is. There are some people who become homeless through no fault of their own. Then they sink into poverty, and then they do all the behaviors that make us so anxious and upset. They steal, they smear feces on places out of anger, they self-medicate. Those are, your, your fears, I understand. I, I know that they're justifiable. But the point is, if we can just stabilize people, a lot of those behaviors can be mitigated and go away because they're just trying to, it's just a matter of everyday survival. And we're not going to be able to help everybody. So, uh, those are my comments to, today. Thank you for coming. And any information I can get to you, I'm more than willing to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner West, you're up next.
Chair, um, and my colleagues, thank you so much. Um, I, I want to start, I know some people probably had to get back to work or pick up a kid or, or go do something else that's important, too. Um, you know, our founders really firmly believe that a citizenry that engaged in their government was necessary to protect the republic. Uh, and so I am very thankful for every voice, whether I agree or disagree with your voice today or your opinion, that you came and you talked to us. They've emailed us, that you've called us, that you've let your regressives be known to your elected officials because we work for you. Um, you're our boss. The electorate is. Um, I, I serve in this position brand new, 30 days now, at your pleasure. Um, if you don't like the way we have represented you, please show up at the ballot box. Unfortunately, Oregon, in my opinion, has over and over again shown up in the wrong way. These issues do not happen in a vacuum. They did not happen overnight. I'm a sixth generation Oregonian. I grew up in North Portland. And this is not something that I recognize. This is not my Oregon anymore. But guess what? People who disagree with you, or me, or this board voted differently. They voted in the most radical, embarrassing, harmful drug measure, Measure 110. It was misrepresented. It was promoted by a radical political agenda, and it is causing untold human despair in every corner of this state. We watched Governor Brown and her feckless leadership tear this state apart, most unpopular governor in the union, not solve this problem, but continue to promote problems that exasperated it further and further. We have a feckless leader in Mayor Wheeler in Portland that has taken the city of roses and a crown jewel on the West Coast, and we've watched it turn into many places that looks more like a third world country. Clackamas County residents and voters decided to vote in the same legislators, many of them in our county, that continue to support policies that handcuff local governments like us from being effective. Unfunded mandates and dictating to Happy Valley exactly how your community gets to look. It doesn't look enough like Portland, so we're going to create policies that retrofit and force you to look like our leftist progressive utopia. Many of us have already left the state and gone to other places. And, um, I'm mad, too. I don't trust my government either. Uh, and, uh, as a care provider, as someone who has cared for these people that are absolutely in crisis in the streets, walking through Portland like it's an episode of The Walking Dead, I have been there, too. But see, something's a little bit different about local government. Instead of, um, forcing unfunded mandates or metro, which is a unique, unnecessary layer of government that mandates on us also, controls urban growth boundaries, makes housing unaffordable, continues to push an agenda often under the guise of equity as if it solved anything. Um, local government has to fix things. We do have to show up and fix your pothole. We have to make the streetlights work. We're the government closest to you, so we impact your life the most. And, um, we don't just represent the homeless. We also represent every single one of your families and your businesses and your community. And, um, I hope that we can show good leadership in Clackamas County as we feel the angst like you do, and are, and are voted in to try to solve this with the resources we have on a local level, regardless of our political leanings. And we have to deal with the garbage given to us and to many cities and counties like this, all up and down the West Coast. You know, we'll see if Turnkey happens. But I know that this board is investigating very intently at other North American models that are not the Portland model. There's the Alberta Recovery Center in Canada that's incredibly effective with the high success rate, with many, many people becoming self-sufficient, free and whole, the same type of people that we're dealing with. There are models in Austin, Texas, Houston, Texas, um, and other places all over in Nevada. And there's a place also that I can talk about in Reno, Nevada. There are success models where people just like you are solving the problem in their community. But I also hope that we can do a better job as elective as, um, as asking you to partner with us to create that strategic plan. Because alls I hear today is all of us are fed up and mad, and we want to solve it. Um, I'm right there with you. And I hope that Clackamas County can do better at linking arms with you to figure out how to solve it together. And I'm sorry that you felt like this was a surprise on you. I've been here for 30 days. Um, and, you know, jumping in with this like two feet, just like you guys are. Um, but I'm not going to be shy about calling out the broken policies. And I hope But I'm not going to be shy about calling out the broken policies, and I hope the voters are waking up and are going to say no more. So often, we get caught up on what's happening in the White House, or what did Biden do this week, or what did he not do? Or we get caught up in the big, you know, frenzies of media and cable news and all of that. But what impacts your life the most is what's happening right now, and I think that Clackamas County is special, and we can solve it in a special way. And I'm not asking you to trust me because you don't know me, but I am asking that you continue to engage, tell us how you feel, and then please help us be part of a real solution that shows Portland how it's really done and how we're different. And that's my commitment to you. I, you know, I'm listening intently. Please bend my ear. Get my... You can call this cell phone. I will do my best to respond to you. Email me. And I think that that's the heart. I think that's where we're not talking past each other. Adam, you're correct. But let's figure it out together. Let us partner with you, and I hope to God we can do better at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up, and then I'll conclude.
Yep. Well, I'm not here today, or even 12 years ago, or 25 years ago, when I got involved. I ran my business. I kept my nose to the grindstone, made payroll. I thought, at the time, naive as I was, just going to show, I wasn't paying attention. I just thought, local government, not national government, not state government, local government was a fine oil machine. And I discovered, unfortunately, that it was not, and I found out the hard way. And so I chose to work hard and volunteer my time to make it better. And long story short, when I identified what I thought was going to be poverty and more homelessness in 2005, when I figured that out, reading studies and being the kind of analytical person that I am, I started saying, well, what are you all going to do about it? You know, I was sitting on a metro advisory committee at the time, and I kept on pushing. So what are you going to do about it? We know it's coming. What are you going to do? What are you going to do? And I didn't really see a lot of action. I just saw a lot of this. People talking, you know, their own ideas, their own solutions, and it's gotten worse. The gentleman who's still sitting here in the back talked about, you know, how expensive it is to build a home here, how expensive the property is, the urban growth boundary. Yes, it's about $150,000 a house, more expensive inside the urban growth boundary than it is outside the urban growth boundary. That's the experiment, right? You know, but there again, we know that housing and poverty is something that's nationwide. It's growing across this country. I think we can do better. I wanted to retire several years ago. I'm still here. I ran for reelection, not because I want to be here, per se, but I'm still... There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And we see this all the time, and, you know, what gets voted in by the voters, Measure 110, I've got heartburn with that. I think it's going to be... I think the money they generate to fix a cause is going to cause more damage than the problem that... It's backwards. It's not... So we're, you know, we're... Our state legislators are hearing a lot, and I think that is where, frankly, a lot of people like yourselves on some of these issues, if you look at the big picture, and we are going to be there, we're going to be talking to our state... The lawmakers that put some of this in place that, in some cases, I know they're there with good intention, but they don't understand it well enough, or they're not maybe asking the right questions. And maybe it might be feel-good policy that they pass a law. But, you know, we have to have metrics. We need to be measurements to say, is that law working? If it's not working, or it's going backwards, that we repeal it, or we peel it back or fix it. But I'll tell you, I get more... I'm more upset with the state legislature than I am with local governments. And I say not all local governments have it all together either, but I'm critical of that, and I understand that's why I'm here today. Fighting, fighting... I believe in community. I believe in safe neighborhoods. I want my kids and grandkids to be successful, and my neighbors, my friends, and have a county, a place, a city, a local community where we feel all good and safe, and we're all doing good things. I think that's our goal. Our staff, frankly, and the work they put together for yesterday's session on this particular issue, did great work. They listened to us. They have. So I got to applaud Adam, people not here, Vaheed who's not here, Rod in the back, others. They're listening. We're operating the facilities there today that I alluded to earlier and doing our best to operate them, even though we are not the owner. I think this particular facility, if we do follow through, we do own it, we'll have more control than the facilities that are... That were these 90 people are in this transitional housing shelter model today. So that'll be, frankly, a strength, you know, we have more control over the site. But, you know, we... It is important. I totally agree. I really appreciate the public comment, and I really appreciate the passion you all bring. And, you know, it's important, not in just this arena, but all the others. You know, I do business at the office supply place that the gentleman in the back mentioned. I still go there. The neighboring business, I used to get off and on. I don't... I think it still is, but physical therapy, I got physical therapy there. So when I was there, years ago, getting my physical therapy and looking out the window, I saw homeless people encampments down below, the property owners nearby. I know. I've walked down in there. There are homeless camps down in there today. People don't know that. There's graffiti. If you drive there today at the Quality Inn nearby, not on the Quality Inn structure itself, there's graffiti. So there... These areas, like where we put our first shelter, they had these same problems going on before we got there. And when we were done, actually, in that particular instance, and I hope are successful everywhere else, we cleaned it up, and it's gone today because we have a law enforcement presence, we have a staff presence, we have the DA's presence, we have our NLP program, our Neighborhood Liberty Project, which works on making sure that local community is doing... Is abiding by the law and our rules. So hopefully, it'll be an improvement when we're done, frankly. It'll be an asset, and hopefully, we'll take some of those businesses that are suffering from the people on the street right now that are causing some of the problems, or they're loitering, or, you know, the petty theft that might be associated with them, and hopefully get them in the right place. That's our goal. I've said a lot. I do want to just say that I... To my colleagues that on Friday, I again did the homeless count process and met some individuals and listened to their stories, and we interviewed them. Some of them were quite candid in telling them what their problems or challenges are based on the questionnaire. And, you know, there were people, certainly, that had issues that they admitted, and some of which don't have issues, they were just economic issues. They're homeless because they don't have a job. They're homeless because they can't afford the rents. The rents are ridiculous. If I was a teenager and I had to pay $1,800 a month for an apartment, man, that's all... You know, my first apartment was $150, and I was making $8 an hour at the time, and I was skimping by, frankly, to make the rent and eat and buy the insurance and the gas for my car to go to work and back. It's just challenging, especially for younger populations right now, to be a young adult and be able to afford all this stuff. The minimum wage is going up, but the cost of living is ridiculously high. We don't have a lot of control over that. We can try and reduce fees where we can, and I think we're trying. But in the metro region, it's quite expensive to do anything. The builders, we've talked to them directly on what we can do to help. We're trying to find means to make housing more affordable. It's not easy, though. Price of materials, price of land is ridiculous in this area, and the more popular this area is, the marketplace says, you know, that lot, that 5,000-square-foot lot that was $100,000 then to $125,000, to $150,000, to $200,000, to $250,000, depending where it's at, that's just for the dirt. Just paying a mortgage on the dirt, that's more than I paid for my house today. So I said a lot, Chair, just appreciate all the comment, and certainly, we're going to be working hard as a team here to try to solve these problems the best we can and do our best for all of the citizens of this county. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, all commissioners. I'm going to give a little bit of history, whether you want to hear it or not. How did we get here? Remember when marijuana passed? It started with marijuana. I was on the Board of County Commissioners, and I submitted a statement to voters' pamphlet, "Do not pass that." I campaigned against that. And we all talk about Measure 110. I campaigned against that. And then came Measure 114. Do you even know what that is? Again, another voter-approved drug legalization of psychedelic mushrooms. And then this Board of Commissioners, last year, put out a pause on it for two years, waiting, just giving us some time not to implement it. Self-medicating, you drive into a facility where they admit that you go into an altered state, you're given a mushroom, you go into an altered state, and it's supposed to fix all kinds of things, but then you can get in your car and drive wherever you want. I have opposed that. I have opposed that. I have opposed that. You all want to know where the money was coming from? As I said before, the Metro Bond, several years later, the Supported Housing Services measure, it was a tax on our citizens. It was voted in favor of, and now we have this here. Voters at this last election voted in Governor Kotek, who has said we're doing an emergency declaration, and I feel it's our job to educate Governor Kotek on the models that work best for local government because she comes out of the legislature. And the top-down measures coming out of the legislature that were spoken to today aren't working. I served in the legislature for four years in the early 2000s. I understand how they think. And so this commission is working very hard on these issues and land use issues so we can get more land for Clackamas County to build houses, businesses, commercial, industrial, and there's many, many things that we're working on to try to make this county better. But I want to thank you all for coming, voicing your opinions. We're doing... We're all doing the very best we can with our limited resources and the mandates and the laws that have been thrown at our feet. Thank you very much. Here is no further information. Before this commission, we are adjourned.